I should have been standing at the door passing these out.
Most people I work with.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. If you could all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unafraid, undegowed, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Move on to item three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as presented? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move that we accept the minutes as submitted.
Nope, not the minutes, the agenda.
The agenda, sorry.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. We will move on to item four. This is going to be the first public comment period for non-agenda items, and seeing that we've got a crowd here, I'm expecting some public comment. So just a couple reminders: Public comment is limited to four minutes. And if you could please state your name and address, it's not required, but it's helpful for us to get context from where you're coming from. So we'll open the first public comment period.
Is this on? Okay. If you are so inclined, please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for graciously giving us Ashdod County to raise our families, run our businesses, and be servants of your will. We may be landowners, but ultimately, this is your land. Please forgive us for the times that we have been unkind to one another. Please bring us together tonight to not only protect Ashdod, but to protect each other. Please be in the hearts and minds of both the Ashdod residents and the members of the board. We know that you are ever-present with us, you will never leave us, and that good will prevail. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danita DeBryan. I live on West L Avenue. Our horse farm is adjoining to the property that is the proposed BES facility. I have a feeling on the night when the New Edge presentation came to talk to you that many of you just had a mental calculation quickly on how far this would be from your home. You probably felt relief if you are more than the two-mile required radius, or you may have felt concern if you live nearby. We all know that a two-mile radius of safety is a fictitious number. People 40 miles away from the Moss Landing fire in California are still having respiratory problems. Have you gone over and looked at this area? It's not just a cornfield. There are at least seven housing additions within the area of this, and hundreds of single-family dwellings surround it. It's a sought-after school district, and three businesses that I know of rely on clean ground and clean water. They all call this area home. I've been living in fear every day since we heard about this possibility. It's not even here yet, and I worry about it constantly, day and night. And here, even if we wanted to sell our property today, its worth would be far devalued just at the possibility that that's going to be located there. We all know that these kinds of facilities have no business being in a residential area. Even if we manage to escape the toxic fumes while it's burning, what about all of our animals? And after evacuation, we return to contaminated soil and water. How would the township fix that? This technology is too new. It has proven 26 times, in the United States alone, that it's not safe. 22 of those have happened since 2019. I was in the meeting this week with our city planner, Jody Stefani. I was pleased to hear that she would be opposed to something like this in our village because the technology is too new. So I would expect that, being in her position and many of yours, that you would put a restricted ordinance to the board, one that would not allow it to be installed here, one that is not near any homes for at least a two-mile radius, and one that's located in an industrial site, not a residential area. And by all means withhold any upfront decommissioning funds for future site cleanup. These people have been known to put things in areas and then disappear as soon as something bad goes wrong. There's no amount of money that this township can earn from the proposed tax revenue that would make up for the pain and suffering and loss of the people in this village. Thank you.
Is there a way to connect this to the screen, as you guys have done before?
We have a different computer connected to the screen for the agenda items.
Okay. Can you please open that up, and I will use it, as I've done before as well?
Well, it's not a township laptop. It's a private laptop.
Do you have technical support here that can handle that?
Will you attempt to help them? The timer is going also.
That's not fair. This is not our technical issue.
You could ask in advance, and we would have had it ready for you.
We've used it previously. Thank you. A utility-scale battery-energy storage system is a large battery setup, often made up of many big battery containers grouped together that a power company uses to help balance the electricity grid. Each container is about the size of a semi-truck trailer and weighs near 100,000 pounds. Here's what it does in short: It stores electricity when supply is abundant or demand is low, for example, from solar or wind power. Later, it releases the electricity back into the grid when the demand is high or generation is low. Ashdod's BES project was presented at the Ashdod Planning Commission meeting on August 14 by three employees of a startup developer called New Edge. Our planning director asked New Edge not to disclose the location of the project they'd signed a lease for after they had stated that Ashdod's BES must be located near a power station. They planned for a five-acre, 100- to 300-megawatt system with the option to expand to fill more of the 52-acre parcel. They stated it would take two to five years to complete the project, with 12 to 18 months of construction time, and the project had a lifespan of 25 years. The entire site would be remotely monitored. The staff would not be onsite after the launch. Developers claimed little fire department training was necessary because all these are so safe they can be shut down remotely, and fires just put themselves out, all of which history shows is incorrect. Developers admit this is a new technology, and they won't admit that this is a dangerous technology with much work and testing to be done. BES incidents around the United States show industrial-scale battery storage systems pose significant risks, including toxic fire hazard, toxic environmental contamination, increased risk of health issues, light and noise pollution, depreciating property values, decreased property tax revenue. BES projects must be disclosed before people sell their homes. There's a risk of being uninsurable by our insurance companies, as well as being a target for cyber and terrorist attacks. There are also decommissioning issues with BES systems. There are currently 838 utility-scale battery storage projects in the United States as of October of 2025. To put the dangerous speed of growth into perspective, in 2024, there were only 178 storage projects in the United States. Developers are being contracted by utilities to work as quickly as possible to get ordinances cleared up and break ground on BES to take advantage of up to 50% stacked tax credits and 80% loan guarantees, courtesy of taxpayers. There have been over 150 BES incidents reported as of October of 2025. There are likely twice as many not reported in the news. Fires at BES facilities cause extensive damage after battery cells are overheated. Handling lithium-ion fires requires different firefighting techniques, as the cells can produce their own oxygen and reignite even if they've been extinguished using traditional methods. Toxic gases are also released during the burning. Firefighters struggle to contain the blaze because of the extreme heat and challenges of fires and tightly-packed battery units. Firefighters must keep other units cool while the unit on fire finishes burning out. Ashdod's project New Edge developers could not have been more wrong when they claimed fire personnel would not need much additional training. This statement error gives further evidence onto why new, inexperienced developers should not be allowed to construct these dangerous projects. The September 2024 BES fire in Escanado, California took three days to put out, and three days of evacuations and shelter in place of residents within a one-and-a-half-mile radius due to toxic fumes. Four schools had to be closed. Due to the nature of these fires, the fire crews could not use traditional methods and had to let the affected battery containers burn themselves out. The firefighters had to remain onsite throughout the fire to ensure other units remained cool and the fire did not spread. A year later, zero cleanup has occurred, and they expect years for cleanup due to battery instability. Reports have found significant groundwater contamination and smoke exposure effects and continued off-gassing, which will take years to fully understand. In April of 2019, an explosion and fire occurred at the McMicken Battery Energy Storage System in Surprise County, Arizona, injuring four firefighters and issuing permanent lung damage to them. Following the incident, FEMA funded research into the fire's causes and hazards. A defect within a single lithium-ion battery cell caused it to fail internally. The pictures give a real picture of the instability of lithium-ion.
I'm sorry, your time is up, and I did reset it at four minutes.
Developers insist battery systems are safer now, and that's a nice answer to sales objections. But insane rush supply, demand across the US and the world has created quality issues. 2024 global inspections of factories revealed a sharp increase in defects tied not to the battery cells themselves, but now to the systems surrounding them: HVAC, fire suppression systems, racking, and electrical design. It has been found the share of the system-level defects jumped from 48% to 72% in a single year. This majority of failure incidents demonstrates that while manufacturing defects do contribute to some failures, a larger contributor is the errors during the design, integration, and also operation of the units. The rush to break ground for government incentives and battery factories to keep up with demand are a dangerous combination. The New Edge developers insisted battery instability could be monitored and managed off-site. However, all of us know that these batteries cannot simply be shut down when they are charged. They are charged until discharged, which is not done with the flip of a switch and certainly cannot happen when instability is already present. Incident after incident, we've seen fire suppression systems fail. We can't even take small battery packs into check luggage. Why would we cover acres of them? There are also other costs of the BES for taxpayers. We've heard of some incentives that have been offered, however. Stored energy sold back to utilities claim to save the consumers in the end. However, there's yet to be a case where consumers have seen their energy bills reduced. The Van Cal project is projected to cost $100 to $300 million. With the current subsidies on BES projects, that's $50 to $150 million of taxpayer money handed back to these developers and the utility company. There will also be significant roadware of 18 months of construction. And while BES fires often take two to seven days to manage and 18 million gallons of water to put out, the fire department costs would certainly be astronomical. Towns across the US are banning BES, and we're watching incidents all across the nation happen. So what has been done? Other communities like Comstock and Bangor have spoken out at their community meetings. Schools have pushed back on developers. There's a largest lawsuit with 70 communities and organizations trying to get the power back to local administration that was taken away by PA 233. The Michigan House also tried to introduce bills to give the power back to the governments. However, that bill has stalled at the Senate Committee. There is an oversaturation and a lack of need for more BES in Michigan. The rush to install as many has created a real oversaturation problem. Michigan's official storage target is 2.5 gigawatts by 2030, yet 17 gigawatts of projects are already proposed. This expansion is subsidy-driven, not demand-driven. What does Ashdod need to do? We're asking the board to stand up for residents, create energy ordinances that limit utility-sized BES to industrial zones only, create two-mile buffers for homes, and also be more transparent. This is a map of where the Ashdod BES project is currently leased for. While our planning director told the developers not to disclose the location, it was in public records with the county clerk's office. It's on a county line, and will have an impact on both Ashdod and Almina, Kalamazoo County, and also Van Buren County. It should also be noted that our neighbors have told us that ITC developers have also contacted them across the street if they can't get it through in Ashdod. The developers are not stakeholders. They all live out of state. However, every resident in this circle is a direct stakeholder and resides in a sensitive receptor site. Not to mention that we would all be on the hook for superfund cleanup if this catches fire.
Your time is up. Sorry.
Thank you.
Gary DeBryan. I think it's pretty clear, when you see the presentation, that a large-scale battery storage system is not your typical energy project. You're not looking at a solar panel or even a substation, both of which have been studied for years, have been in existence for years, and do not carry the technology and safety risks that a battery storage system does. Here's what I've found out for some research. These systems have been around for only about 10 years, and significant challenges still exist with the technology. Battery storage system fires and explosions are reported every year since 2018, resulting in human injuries, death, and environmental issues. At least 80 BESS significant failure incidents have occurred in the last seven years. There is a lack of established modeling and risk assessment as compared to the chemical, aviation, nuclear, and petroleum industries. Lithium-ion batteries are prone to overheating, swelling, leakage, fire, smoke, and explosions in scenarios involving thermal runaway. Battery fires release highly-toxic gases and hazardous materials into the local area. These facilities need to be in an industrial zone far away from housing. Ashdod Township cannot allow, in a residential area, a technology that is prone to thermal runaway and fire, which cannot be put out with water, emits toxic fumes while burning, and may burn for days. Thank you.
Yeah, so my house is the one directly across the substation. No one has... I don't give permission for them to build this, and I hold everybody who authorizes it responsible, which won't be good.
Hello, my name is Faith Fletcher, and I'm a resident of Hidden Pond. And we're located at the Van Cal-Almina intersection. And this proposed battery site is less than 1,000 yards from our houses, and we don't want to be that close to a sitting time bomb. We don't want to lose our property values. We worked so hard for our homes over the decades, not to have some out-of-state company come in and think it's a great idea to put something explosive so close to people's houses. I'm not giving up half the value of my house. I'm not giving up 20% of the value of my house that I worked my whole life for. I'm not going to make it that easy for anybody. It doesn't work that way. Higher insurance rates are also something that we might have to grapple with. Hopefully, this never sees any kind of a fruition, but nobody can afford higher insurance rates. All these batteries are stored wide out in the open. There's no protection from any lightning or any elements. I understand that they have built-in coolers. Well, those are going to run probably 24/7. Don't know if they use them in the winter. The battery company probably didn't inform anybody of any important pertinent details. But at the end of the day, these are in the wide-out open. So one lightning strike, is it going to catch on fire? Maybe, maybe not. But once one catches on fire, it spreads. It can't be contained. It can't be put out. These burn so hot. And when the battery-powered vehicles first started coming out, I asked some people from the fire department at Madawan, and I said, "Did you receive any additional training?" He says the only way that they can extinguish a battery that's about this size in a vehicle is to drop it in a lake or bury it with sand. That's the only way those kind of fires go out. Neither one of those options is available anywhere near this land. That's not an option. So if and when it does catch on fire, cyanide gas is emitted from these burning batteries. So everything outside will die. If we survive, don't know. The battery company doesn't care. They're only after profits. And our future shouldn't depend on the direction of the wind, if anything were to happen. We feel like they are wanting to pollute our lands. We won't allow it. Please draft an energy ordinance restricting the battery locations anywhere near residential neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Anne Hicks, and I live in the Tuscany neighborhood. So the front of this proposed lot might be a mile away, but the back of it is a couple yards away, 100 yards maybe, if that, from my home. We envision a community free of township and county and state corruption, in which economic developments are designed and vetted and voted upon by the people. They impact not distant regulatory agencies and special interest conglomerates. I'm a concerned neighbor who understands that green energy is a requirement of our future, but I also am concerned with the environment which we are personally charged with being stewards here in Ashdod. The technology is very new. So new, in fact, that no one really is certain about what decommissioning looks like, will cost, the environmental impact it will have, let alone the environmental impact while operational. Certainly educated theories exist, but those will likely evolve just like the technology has already, in a very short amount of time, shown to have been... Short amount of time it has been used. It is constantly evolving. Technology has proven to do this time and time again, very rapidly in recent decades. Best guesses are just that. They're simply guesses. Furthermore, from a business perspective, the lack of knowledge of whom these units will be contracted out to is concerning for the public. New Edge is really just a broker who finds land, then it finds an energy company, and it brings them together. They manage/broker the deal. We have yet to see with whom our township will be contractually obligated or tied to. We understand that the transaction is very new, and a repeal of PA 233 of 2023, if our township attorneys draft it correctly, could terminate the project. But given the scope of this project, self-confessed by New Edge as a larger project and the technology being newer, we would like and deserve more answers. And at the very top of the pile, when it comes to importance, we need to protect our citizens. The word "safe" is used many times by New Edge as a diffuser, but with very little evidence. In fact, they mentioned several cases of unsafe circumstances with these units. To extend PA 233 ties the hands of our local elected officials, let us be the example of putting our people first, working hard, pushing, even fighting for what is right for Ashdod homeowners, our land, our animals, our wilderness, and creating opportunities within negotiations to set the tone for doing this right. Ignorance is not an excuse, nor should it be. Projects like these have a lasting impact on the communities, nature, people's health. Let it be known for settling that we are here to set the standard, a high bar for what is best for the local community and standards we are living in. That's it. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Carrie Jackson, and I've lived in the Hidden Pond subdivision for 24 years. And I just want to state that I have worked very hard, and my husband and I have worked very hard, and we are opposed to this battery plant moving into this area, to the residential area. And I just wanted to say, again, that... I'm sorry, I'm just very upset by all of this, and I just want to voice my opinion. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Broyles, and I currently reside in the Tuscany neighborhood, living in the evacuation zone of the proposed New Edge BES site. I am extremely concerned with the increase in system-level defects in these systems. According to a July 2025 PV Magazine report, the Clean Energy Association's 2024 global factory inspections revealed a sharp increase in BES defects. The defects jumped from 48% to 72% in just a single year. This, along with the rush to seize tax incentives and subsidies, has led to a decrease in quality and assurances, all while leaving communities exposed to risks of fires, toxic contamination, and abandoned sites. Not to mention the decrease in property values to homeowners near these sites, like myself. As a community, we should be pushing for stricter ordinances and regulations and greater protections than what federal agencies already demand for chemical hazards. Placing these experimental defect-ridden systems just 300 feet from homes and schools in Ashdod is reckless at best. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Dr. Katie Mitchell, and I'm an Ashdod resident. I live in Mystic Heights neighborhood. And I'm here to urge you to say no to this project proposal. Many residents, as you're hearing tonight, myself included, are deeply concerned about the potential negative impacts on property values that such a project would bring to our community. Beyond the financial implications, there are also serious environmental and health concerns associated with these large-scale battery-energy storage systems. associated with these large-scale battery energy storage systems. There are simply too many unknown variables with these types of systems. The long-term safety, maintenance, and environmental effects are still being studied. And even experts acknowledge that the technology and regulations are evolving faster than our understanding of the potential risks. The possibility of chemical leaks, toxic runoff, thermal runaway events leading to fires or explosions remain a serious concern. Additionally, the long-term disposal and recycling of these large battery units pose unresolved environmental challenges that could impact our area for decades. Oshmo Township has the obligation to value the safety, well-being, and property integrity of its residents. Approving this project without full clarity on the long-term consequences would put all of those at risk. I respectfully urge you, the township, to prioritize the health, safety, and prosperity of our community now and into the future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Haystack and I'm current trustee of the 2559 South Van Kell property adjacent to his that this wraps around. My brother and his family live there. Can't believe this is even on the table. Years ago, when ITC built the substation across the, on the Van Kell or on the Van Buren side of Van Kell, the liaison came to all of us who were selling our property or had to sell it to them and minimized everything that was going to happen. I remember the gals told my parents and myself, the substation won't be larger than a two-car garage. Look at the monster out there now. This is a monster. Don't let it get its foot in whatever they're promising. It's going to be 10 times worse. Please don't let this go through.
My name is Stephen Haystack. I've been in Oshmo for a long time. Any of you older guys out here know with what's on KL Avenue, the old landfill, and with what it did to the water within that area, including where our house is, we're right next to where the plume's running down with the contaminated water that happened because of the landfill that we allowed to have happen here. I wasn't old enough at the time to make a vote then, but I am now. I hope everybody takes into consideration what happened then, how it ruined everybody's water and their wells. What could happen with this? Just take that to heart so we don't make a mistake a second time. Thank you.
Good evening, Christopher. Got a house over here at 966 North 7th. And I own property in Texas Township, which is about a mile and a half from this proposed site where I run my business. I just learned about this like three days ago and I'm just astonished. Anybody in this room would even consider something so stupid. I mean, this is crazy. It's only got a 25-year proposed lifespan. Like, what are you going to do in 25 years? It's going to take five years to build and 25 years later, these batteries are going to be bad? What are you going to do with them? Is it another $300 million to replace those batteries a second time or a third time before it catches on fire and blows up anyway? I mean, it's just insane. And then it's all in residential area and surrounded by, what, six neighborhoods? I can't even imagine why anybody would even consider putting something like this in a residential area. It should be an industrial area. Everybody's talking about a two-mile zone, but there's a 40-mile potential plume of contamination if it burns. This thing should be in the middle of a desert if it is even proposed, because it sounds just like it's a waste of time and money to begin with, like all the solar panels and all the windmills they put up north that produce like a third of what they're proposed to do and then they're going to pay for their construction costs. I mean, time and time again, the state of Michigan goes into these projects for this green new future and it's not panned out yet. Anywhere in the country or the world for that matter, it's just insane. I can't even fathom why this would be on the table in a residential area. So please shoot this down. This is bad. Pass an ordinance, outlaw these things, ban them, get them out of here. Texas Township did the exact same thing like a month ago. They just passed an ordinance because it's probably proposed there as well. They saw the light. They said, we don't want this. They were near our community. And yet, if it gets built here, it's a mile from Texas Township and they've already banned it. So take a note from your neighbors and do your math and do your research and figure it out. Ban this, it's terrible.
Okay. I just want to say thank you to all of you for coming out here tonight and sharing with us your stories. We will take it into consideration and we'll close the the public comment period for non-agenda items. We'll move on to item five. Approval of the minutes from August 14, 2025 as corrected, August 28, 2025 regular meeting, and September 23, 2025 special meeting. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes from those three meetings? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item six. The review or review and discussion of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Draft. Do you want me to introduce it, Jody, or?
Sure. I thought you did.
That's fine. So to the commissioners here, I met with Jody and Suzanne earlier this week and came up with a plan to go over the draft plan and thought that we would have Progressive do a short introduction for each chapter essentially of the plan and then open it up to commissioners for comments and discussion before moving on to the next chapter. If that's agreeable, that's how we'd like to move forward. Great, Suzanne and Sarah.
Just a moment while I plug this in.
We've got the spinny dial.
It's being extra slow right now.
We call that the blue circle of death, not the spinny dial.
That's what's happening.
It's spinning.
It's kidding, it's just my laptop coming back to life. Okay.
And I think also, this is before Sarah starts the presentation. This is a follow-up to the presentation that Planning Commission and Township Board received. And so there was a request for additional discussion. And so hopefully you've all had, we had, we provided the plan before. This is a chance, hopefully, since our discussion, that you had an opportunity to review the plan. And so hopefully, we can answer any questions, but we thought just a little refresher. So Sarah, this is an annotated presentation from what we had provided. And while they're working on it, I'll talk about the process a little bit. So part of the process when you're reviewing the master plan, so just maybe a little background since we have a full house with the audience. A comprehensive plan is a plan that describes the desired future for the community for the next 20 years. So it does not suggest that there's immediate change, but as change occurs, how do we proactively anticipate what might happen and where it should go? And then that plan, it's a policy document. It's not an ordinance, but it does guide what the zoning ordinance says. So the zoning ordinance, some people had made comments about the energy and energy ordinance. So the zoning ordinance tells you where uses can go and is law. So the plan, this is just the policy document, but then it would guide zoning over the period of time. The planning process, which Sarah will talk about, involved a lot of public engagement. Some of you may have come to breakfast for dinner at the fire hall that we had with pancakes. There was also a community survey that went out. We've had community engagement in this meeting with an ice cream social. And then you also have a history of doing some high-quality plans. And so the work, Go Green Oshmo, was incorporated into this document as well as other sub-area plans that were completed by the township over the years and the past master plan that was adopted as well. So all that input plus data. So we looked at both qualitative data and quantitative data. The qualitative data was the input from the community and what has been shared with us. Quantitative is the data, so is the numbers. So census data. There was an Upjohn Institute study about housing. What that told us about housing types and households within Oshmo. So for example, we know that about 60% of the households in Oshmo are comprised of one and two persons. And there's about 2.3 persons per household overall in the township. But we also looked at the housing types that are there. So as we think about making Oshmo a community for all and that everyone has a range of housing choices in locations and you have a very nice diverse housing stock in Oshmo, how does the location of that relate to our transportation system? For example, the bus system, as well as where the shopping locations are located. And you have the new Costco and the new Trader Joe's. How does the development patterns as we see Oshmo combine to work together to be economically efficient so that the township is on a trajectory to be fiscally sound for years to come and that there's not a large burden placed on taxpayers for additional services, additional water and sewer if it's going in places where you really don't want it to go? And so community character has been a big component of that discussion. Where the rural area is, where you were just talking about the battery plant or the storage facility. You heard a lot of comments about the rural character of Oshmo and valuing that. We also recognize that you have water and sewer in some areas. You have bus service. You have some areas of heavy commercial and where that development happens. How do we have infill development? So there's been a lot of dialogue about that. And so the master plan is really kind of constructed around some of those things. And Sarah's going to talk about some of the key themes that came from the planning process. So the planning, I don't know if there's any other foundational kind of setting the table for this presentation that we need to do. Oh, wait, look, we're getting progress.
Okay.
There we go. Okay.
Oh.
Oh, no.
Oh, boy.
You were so close.
I don't know if I can like.
Wait, oh, there it is there. Can you just run show?
That's weird. I want to press present, it goes away.
Maybe just leave it the way it just scroll.
Okay. Okay, this is as good as we're going to get for today. It's not going to be in presentation mode, but that's okay. Okay, so as Suzanne and Phil said, today we're going to kind of walk through the different chapters of the Comprehensive Plan to have time to discuss and review those together. And again, it's a lot of the information that we shared already at our joint board meeting, which I believe all of the Planning Commission attended. So there shouldn't be any new information there. We've made some changes from that meeting on the place types map. So that'll be something that we'll share today. But otherwise, we'll just kind of give a brief introduction to the chapters and then we'll just have time for that discussion as a group today. Okay, so first to kick us off, I just wanted to give a full overview of the seven different chapters of the Comprehensive Plan. Would you like me to turn one of these TVs or do you have screens there? Okay, perfect. So we have seven different chapters and these are what we'll walk through today. The chapters one and two are kind of the introductory pieces of the plan. They talk about the data, what was the initial motivation for the plan, and then that community engagement that we gathered for the plan. So they kind of tee up chapters three and four, which are the real recommendations of the plan. Chapter five reflects Go Green Oshmo, as Suzanne mentioned. And then chapter six gets more into our Master Streets Plan. So that's something that we'll discuss at our next meeting, but there is a summary included in the plan. And then chapter seven is the implementation chapter of how do we make the recommendations of the plan come to fruition in the township? So as I mentioned, we'll start off with chapter one. So this chapter really talks about the different motivations for this planning effort. And we have six different motivations listed here. And I'll go through them again pretty briefly here since they've all been introduced before. But starting off, we have a connected community begins with a shared sense of belonging for everyone, from newcomers to longtime residents. Our second idea is focused around housing. So there's obviously a need for housing and it's no different for Oshmo. It's a building from the 2023 Housing Plan. The third idea that we're working with here is figuring out how do we approach future commercial in the township? So how can we maybe make some of those more local goods and services available? And then obviously, Oshmo is really growing. They're the 85th most populous community in Michigan right now. So that ties into our place types map that looks at future uses in the township and how we can balance that. Our fifth idea here is centered around transportation. So making Oshmo a safer place for travel, be that motorized, non-motorized, all of the above. And then the last one, and a big part of this effort, was combining lots of the work that Oshmo has already done into this plan. So it reflects past planning efforts. So they're built out a bit more here and I can share this all with you, but for now, we'll go through them since we've already discussed them. And then before we open up for discussion, I wanted to just kind of share this chapter two because these ones really pair together. So this is more of that kind of qualitative data that we gathered in the project. So these were the different engagement events that we hosted throughout the project. We had nine thought leader meetings with kind of our leadership committee group. We had three community pop-ups where we went to different areas of the township to engage with residents where they're at. We had three focus group sessions where we pulled in different sectors of the community for specialized discussions on a few different topics. We had two large community gatherings. One of them was breakfast for dinner, as Suzanne mentioned, and then an ice cream social where we did the early visioning of the plan. And then we had two surveys that we did. One of them was a market survey. So that one had about 260 responses. And then we had a larger response to our overall community survey that reflected the different elements of the Comprehensive Plan as it was drafted. And then I just have some images of those events here. So that kind of quickly summarizes those first two chapters that I know you're all familiar with already. So now we can take time to work through those.
Yeah, so I guess I'll just open it up to the commissioners if there's any questions or discussion items that we'd like to talk about regarding the kind of the why of the document in chapter one and then the public engagement process and community engagement that we did that's summarized in chapter two. All right, let's get into chapter three.
All right, sounds good. So as Phil said, that perfectly describes it. Those first two chapters are our why. And then these next two chapters are the what of that why. So they look at the recommendations that were made based on the initial work of the plan. So again, our vision statement that we came up with based on community engagement and working with staff is that Oshmo is a community designed for everyone. We are connected, adaptable, and diverse, creating opportunities for shared experiences and recreation. Future decisions will support balanced growth and quality of life for residents, visitors, and businesses alike. And then building from that vision statement, which it is a long one, we have, I believe, how many different goals do we have? We have six different goals. So within these goals, we have different objectives that are listed in the plan. And then the following recommendations of the plan all build from these goals. So you'll see them reflected again in the implementation section and in our future land use recommendations as well. But I will have these listed here. So our first one is going back to that initial idea of having Oshmo cultivate a strong sense of place and belonging. Our second goal, following the big ideas again, relates to prioritizing housing for all. Our third goal is to foster a connected, accessible, and resilient transport. Our third goal is to foster a connected, accessible, and resilient transportation system. Fourth goal is to facilitate balanced growth and economic vitality. Then our last two goals are to safeguard natural features and environmental health and finally, enhance community well-being and public safety. So we'll spend some time now talking about, kind of looking at those goals a bit more in depth. If there's any questions you had about the objectives or anything proposed in this chapter three goals section.
Yep, we'll open it up to the commissioners again.
All right.
By silence, I am seeing agreement with vision and goals, which is good. Thank you.
That's good, yeah. They do serve as the foundation of the remainder of the plan. So that's a good place to start.
Are we looking for specific questions?
Yeah, anything, anything.
Under the, this is my page 89. My printed doesn't seem to go along with what's being shown, but it's under objective 2.3. Establish a housing incentive program by offering tax abatements or expedited permitting processes for projects that include workforce and/or a mixture of housing types. What kind of incentive program would that be? Because, Jim, I had a question, I guess for you. And other places in here referred to tax credits and that's not something we can do, is it?
Well, it is within state guidelines and different programs that are out there. In fact, we, I'm trying to think of the one community that's across the street. Westridge. You know, there's a method to give basically tax increment financing for developments that provide housing in their community. So yes, there are programs for that. And in fact, we're doing it.
It used to be known as a brownfield and it changed with our housing issues. And so they expanded it from just brownfields to pretty much any housing development can qualify for that. Like Jim said, the neighborhood across the street, we negotiated with them to have affordable housing options. So that's how it would come out as TIF planning.
Yeah, why the state put it in the statute dealing with what most people think of as contaminated property is beyond me, but that's what the state legislature came up with. And it is a program that can help solve some of the housing problems and we can participate in that.
How about the, I'm sorry, the county's Homes for All Millage? What is that? I mean, are we, we have access to that as well?
I wish the supervisor was here. I think she could tell you more than I could. I know that they're working on trying to make that available. I'm not aware that anything's currently in the works for the township right now, but I think there may be potential for that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just comment on the tax incentive piece, really two pieces. One is you have existing development. For example, along Main, you know, down by the interchange or on the other side of the interchange. If you wanted to see redevelopment happen in some of those locations, incentives are sometimes used to encourage that redevelopment to happen. So you could use incentives to do that. That's what a lot of communities do. The housing brownfield was mentioned, that's another option. Before, we can, we mentioned them as tools in the master plan. The township board would need to decide from a policy standpoint what they wanted to allow. We usually recommend that if you're going to do that, then you have expectations about what's going to happen for that. So a lot of communities will say, well, if we're going to give you a property tax abatement for this, then we're expecting, you know, if we're going to do X, we're expecting Y. So that's where if you feel a need that there's not enough housing, for example, workforce housing for teachers or firefighters, and you're trying to hit a certain price point, what communities will do is set that as part of the expectation for the tax abatement. But that's a later policy discussion and that would all have to be worked out by the township board before it could be enacted. This just identifies that as an opportunity.
Then just one more question, if I could, Jim. The programs that we've had in place, like the corridor improvement authority and we had to go to these other units of government and they could opt out, which meant that increment financing wouldn't be coming from them.
Right. With the new brownfield provisions, there is no opt-out provision.
Okay.
Which is probably why the legislature put the housing in the existing act. So that KBBCC can't opt out, for example.
Yeah, if the township and the county agree, then it's a go.
Okay, all right. Well, that's good to know. That's new.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's good. All right. Okay, so moving along, chapter four is our place types chapter. So this one focuses on future land uses in the township. And just kind of a refresher of what we mean by place type. So attached to the recommendations of the map that we'll share, we have different kind of design and format characteristics of kind of how we would like to see development take shape within the different recommended place types. So that's things such as the different land uses there, how parking's handled, different heights and the visuals of the buildings, and then taking a look at how the streets are designed, which pairs with chapter six. So I wanted to share the map here. So this map is pretty familiar from your previous meeting, but we did make a change to one of the boundary lines. So that was something that I wanted to highlight. So you'll see that this change has happened along Seventh Street here. So we have moved the countryside residential portion a bit east from Sixth Street. So if I flashback to the previous map, you'll see this is the September 23rd version. And what we've done since then is we have pulled back that neighborhood residential line to the Seventh Street and then tucked in the neighborhood mixed-use portion under that as well, just to stay on the intersection. So that's the notable change for the place types map here. But otherwise, this has already been shared. So that's the main change. And then I just wanted to.
I had a question about that, sorry.
Yeah.
I noticed on the map, there's no gateway noted to the north.
Oh, yes. So they're more so placed in areas that are not as rural. So that is a piece of it. Suzanne, did you have some?
Yeah, I mean, stadium and Main are major corridors through the township and that's where they were identified. Just so happens that, you know, the stadium location and Ninth Street are really kind of also right on the border as how, you know, from a gateway standpoint. But didn't really feel like there was a major street that's further to the north of Main that would kind of qualify as a gateway. So I also, just from the audience perspective, and Sarah's going to show where the existing land uses are, but the information that went into the place types map included where your utility lines currently are, where you currently have your major streets. Also, you have a natural features map that shows your wetlands and soil types and other things. So that all informed kind of where some of these boundaries go based on existing development patterns, as well as kind of what's underground and available.
And those maps are in the first chapter of the plan as well, so we can reference back to them. As Suzanne mentioned, we wanted to show the proposed place types map next to the existing land uses of the township. So this is just something that shows you what is anticipated to potentially shift over time. It'll be a very long process, but we wanted to show you that the yellow in the existing land use map right here is one and two family residential currently. These orange pieces are the multifamily residential. And then red is commercial, gray is industrial. I know it's kind of small to see, but those are the primary uses that we're seeing there. And then you can see with the place types map that, again, we haven't assigned specific parcel lines to this map. It's just to guide future growth. But this shows you a comparison of kind of what exists now and then how we're proposing that that be modified as time goes and as things change. So, and something to keep in mind too, this yellow shows one and two family residential. And in the orange here, our neighborhood residential category, that's where we anticipate to see more of an array of housing types. So some of those areas will just be two-unit residential. But it also could span up to those different larger scales, so maybe 10 to 15, 20 units. But that's something that'll really depend on the context of the existing surroundings of that site. So it kind of pairs with that it'll go by the context of the surroundings of the proposed sites for those developments. And then just kind of a summary of these are the, there's essentially five and then we have our parks category that just calls out the different existing parkland in the township. But we have these five different place types. So we have our regional corridor, neighborhood mixed use. And then our two residential categories are neighborhood residential, which has that more diversity of housing types, countryside residential, which is more of that single one-to-two unit residential. And then it maintains the uses that exist in that area. And then our innovation and industry districts. That's where we'll see some of the light industrial, research, education uses. And I have more in-depth descriptions of the place types, but I can kind of bring those up as we see fit, as we go through this chapter. I'll bring the map back up for.
Can you, Sarah or Suzanne, can you, because this always confused me before too, but can you explain the difference between the future place types and a zoning map?
Yes. Yeah, so this is where you're anticipating growth could happen over the next 20 years. It does not change the zoning ordinance. So when you, you know, eventually we'll be looking at the zone districts and trying to align them with this. But when you get to a zoning approval, you have a couple of different choices. You can proactively match the zoning map to some areas if you want. You can wait until a development project is proposed to say, well, that makes sense at this time based off of our goals and objectives and the utilities that are in place. So for example, let's say there's currently a vacant lot and you're not quite ready. You want to wait to see what happens and encourage infill in other locations. So you can decide, eh, okay, we're going to wait and see until we get a development proposal. And then when you get the development proposal, that allows you to evaluate it and whether or not you want to rezone it. So it really can be this progression over time. It doesn't mean we snap it tomorrow and everything is going to change.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but each one of these future place types could and will contain multiple land uses, correct?
The, so the countryside residential is intended to be only residential. The same thing with the neighborhoods, they should be residential. When we talk about use, the use is residential. So the distinction that we made was when we talk about particularly the neighborhood designation, housing types. So the use is still residential, whether it's a cottage court or, you know, a small granny flat or, you know, a little accessory dwelling unit or a single-family house or a group of townhouses. Or, you know, people call them condominiums, but that's a type of ownership. But when you think of those different housing types, the neighborhood area is where that's recommended because that's where you have the infrastructure. The countryside residential is really envisioned to be more single-family possibly, and that's a future discussion about whether or not you wanted to allow an accessory dwelling unit, for example. But it's not anticipated that there's high-density residential in that area.
Yeah, maybe land use was the wrong word, but like, because I'm just thinking back to the joint meeting where we had questions about ag, right? So like, in countryside residential, ag is still a permitted land use.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So ag, and also I want to emphasize that when, what we have in here, if there's an existing lot size or an existing use, those are all property rights that people have. And so this doesn't change any of those property rights for how the property is currently being used or, you know, any of that. It just, it holds. And certainly, if you were to look at the zoning that you have, agricultural uses, you know, you could decide if you want to allow, you know, the farm stands or wedding venues associated with the farms or whatever, you know, that is. If you want to maintain that countryside residential feel, those things that are associated with it to allow for those larger farms to continue in operation can be part of that discussion.
Thank you.
In particular, on page 103, which shows the future places that you've got mapped out. The northeast segment of the county is a neighborhood residential area, okay? But I know there's agricultural fields there right now. We can't, if a farmer wants to farm those, he's got a right to do that. How are we supposed to use this document to determine what's going to happen with what we say now is a neighborhood residential area when we know it isn't?
So the farmer's allowed to continue farming for as long as the farmer wants to farm. If the farmer wants to, 20 years from now, pass it down to children and the children want to farm it, they're fine. If the farmer wants to retire and say, I'm done farming, my kids aren't interested, which is what's been happening, the average age of a farmer now is like 60 years old. They don't want to retire, they want to retire, they don't want to do this anymore and they're interested and they have a willing buyer who says, well, I'd like to develop a neighborhood here. Then it gives them an avenue to be able to approach the township and say, I'd like to rezone this property to have additional residential units for this property. Or they can just develop whatever the zoning code allows. But it provides that opportunity for them to seek a greater, potentially diverse housing types or more units with this designation.
So your plan then envisions that at some point in the future, when that farmer decides he's going to hang it up, that may not be used for agricultural purposes from that point on. At that point, whoever he sells it to is going to have to take steps to come before the zoning board or the township board or whoever is going to write it up and have the property rezoned for what? For whatever he wants to put in there.
No, so this envisions residential use. So the difference in the color, so it's, the map, you don't see ag use on there, right? So the ag use is just allowed and it stays until it decides when to do something else. In that area, there's already going to be residential allowed in that zone district. But with the future land use map, what the neighborhood designation says is, well, if, whether, whatever it's zoned today or if they want to do, maybe there's a range of housing types. So right now, for example, it's zoned for single-family, period. So if you said, well, I want to do, maybe I want to do five single-family homes and two attached homes instead of detached single-family, but that housing type is currently not allowed in your code, they could come and ask for that. And the master plan will say, well, we kind of envision that you might want to ask for some different housing types and that's okay. That aligns with what we've said in the plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for chapter four, for place types, future place types?
And we did speak to agricultural a little differently. Revisions were made based on public comment that we received at the joint meeting.
Correct.
I'm looking for it now, I don't know what page it's on, but.
So I'd like to take us to about page 132 where the matrix is. That was a set of criteria that I can anticipate we would be seeing before us in the future in terms of ordinances, in terms of zoning, whatever. But those, I'm trying to find in my mind how much of those are suggestions and how much of those, because it is a comprehensive plan that we'll look back and say, well, the comprehensive plan says this, so we have to do this. How does that come into play here? And I have just a couple of specifics that I can talk about. But the general idea is the starting place. Can you help me?
Yeah, as you said, this, these are the suggestions. So then they guide those zoning decisions that are to follow. So based on the work of this project, these are the ideas that we're presenting to inform that zoning update. But of course, it's a discussion while those updates are being made as well. But these will hopefully make it more clear when the zoning ordinance is being updated and give guidance on these are the areas where we think the ordinance should be changed to achieve the goals of this plan.
So they will be foundational, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, they will.
They underlay whatever decisions come later.
Yeah, they guide those future decisions. They help inform the zoning decisions, definitely.
The goal of the comprehensive plan is provide the why behind your ordinance. So it's explaining the logic of that. So that's the, you don't see in a zoning ordinance, for example, the goals language or kind of the desired future. for example, the, the goals language, or kind of the, the desired future language we talk, it's, but the master plan's more flowery than what you would, we'd see in a zoning ordinance. But it's still really important because it's explaining what the, what the community wants, what you've, you've decided by policy, why it's important, all of that table setting, that's, that's important to consider. And then, there's still room though, I mean, the, the legal document being the zoning is where the rubber hits the road, ultimately. This informs that and explains that logic behind it. So for example, when you're reviewing your standards, and let's say you have a rezoning request, it's not just doesn't meet with the zoning ordinance, it's also what, what guidance does the master plan provide, and what information is that giving you? So if we looked at the regional corridor, for example, right now, you may not, you know, let's say residential's not allowed in the area where, where regional corridor is, but you've got the big, huge vacant parking lot behind Maple Hill Mall, right? And so if we said, well, we'd like to see residential there because it's right adjacent to the park, and we want to take advantage of Drake Farm and have residential there, and it's near the bus line, and it makes sense for townhomes or some other type of housing, then this provides the guidance to say, that is, that's okay there. We don't need more commercial in that location, that's totally appropriate to put residential there. And then, you were, you know, if you had a developer come in and request that, you would look at the master plan for that guidance to, to let you know that that's what's recommended.
I understand. So in the matrix, I, I just, to the board, I would suggest that we spend time, not necessarily tonight, but to dig into the matrix, because it will have a long-term extent into our, everything we do up here in the future. So if we could do that, that would be beneficial.
Can you give a couple of examples, Scott, of maybe ones that either concern you or have struck, you know, accord with you that you'd like to discuss further? I mean, because I've, I don't know, I can't speak for the other commissioners, but I have gone through this matrix, these matrices of what each future land or place types is, and I would say largely think they give us enough flexibility and speak to reaching those goals that we outlined in the first three chapters. I want to respect everyone who has questions, we definitely need to go through it. So if you have, if you have some immediate ones...
I have just one that I couldn't make sense out of it, it is in the innovation and industry. In commercial, we allow five stories. In innovation and industry, it's only two to three. I didn't understand why if you can have a five-story commercial building, you couldn't have a five-story professional building.
Sure.
That seems odd.
You can, if that's what you would like. We can, we can put the, I mean...
But we're talking about the comprehensive plan.
Yes, yes, so, yes, so I think that's a great question. I think the assumption with the two to three story, and that's why you see these ranges in here, because, you know, it is, we want to give you flexibility for the future. I think the assumption was, the buildings that you have in that area now are generally one and two stories, or high, you know, maybe it's one story, but it's a high one story that would be equivalent to a two-story. And that wouldn't expect to see maybe very large buildings, but I think there's that possible, you know, I think that's a good observation, that you could. Or we have, yeah, we could. I mean, I don't see why we couldn't increase that range if you envision that you would have taller buildings there. So Western was, was connected to a developer who was creating some sort of innovation lab, and they wanted a larger research building, that would make a lot of sense.
Right, we have a very restricted amount of innovation and industry space to begin with, and to restrict what we can do on that footprint, or what an owner could do on that footprint, seems not in the benefit of Ashdod County Township and our residents.
Yeah, no, that's a great, that's a...
Jobs.
Yeah, no, that's very good thinking, yeah.
So, that, that's just one example. I don't have enough specifics here, and I really don't want to, to deal in the specifics personally tonight. But what, what I'm seeing is, I don't understand enough of these and the impacts it will have concerning the future compared to where we're at right now. That's, because it is master plan or comprehensive plan.
Yep, yep. And Suzanne and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is how I look at this piece right here with these matrices, is it's like, this is a mixture of what's existing in Ashdod today, what we've seen in other communities, when you're looking at specific types of development such as research and innovation, parks, those types, and it's like, we want to give a range that's industry standard that we've seen, based on what's here right now and what we want to see and what we see in other communities. What this does is if there's something wildly out of characteristic from what we see in here, it gives us that opportunity to pause and say, does this really fit with what we want? So if we have a proposal come in, and the innovation and industry that is eight stories tall, we would go back to the comprehensive plan and say, well, this is what we envisioned, but does it make sense still, given the specifics of that proposal? It does not preclude us from going down that path. It just simply gives us a reference document to say, this is what we thought would happen, let's review this to make sure it actually does make sense.
Well, maximum flexibility, I think, is very important if we're talking about the number of years that we're dealing with.
Definitely.
And if we can be as close to what we're going to end up seeing in future zoning ordinances and that sort of thing, it's beneficial. I see from the matrix, there's going to be quite a bit of work in our ordinance and our document writing, or modifications. Probably to some good benefit, because we have so many residential categories right now. If we can narrow those down into a category or a couple of categories, wow, that makes life simpler. There'll be a lot of non-conforming in those, but hey, at least we got a start.
Yeah.
And, and what we can do, I mean, I think there's also those numbers, but also the narrative. And what I mean by that is, we could say we envisioned it to be in two to three stories, but there can be an asterisk too, saying, yeah, but for the right, you know, if it's meeting these objectives, or if it's doing this, or, for example, if there's transitional features that are desired, so you wouldn't want, for example, a seven-story building to be right near a single-family home, directly adjacent, right? So the two to three is in scale with the homes that are nearby, but we could also put that asterisk on there and say, as you get closer to the highway, you know, the height can increase. We can, we can build in some of that flexibility and add some of that narrative. And I think, Scott, if you have questions, we'd be happy to sit down with you and go line by line through the table.
Thank you.
So I have something small, and it doesn't fit with the matrix. It's, it's just something, I don't know where it fits, maybe under goals, and I should have mentioned it then, but I didn't, but I think an important part of our community is our agriculture, and while I know we can have ag in there, I would like something, and this is going to sound odd because I don't necessarily know how to do it, something that works with owners to maintain agricultural properties in the community, because I think it's an important part of who we are, it's a part of our heritage, and I think that it is important that we show support to that and understand the importance of it. When I talk to people, it's one of the things they really like about our community is that it is so widely diverse. And as you know, it's only 11% of our township now is agriculture, if, if that. And working with owners to come up with ways to preserve the agricultural heritage would be something I'd like to see, and I just don't know where it goes in there.
So I think, a couple of things. We mentioned the importance of ag in the master plan, but I think there's, there's a couple of things. There's, and there's this, there's this tension between ag and property rights. Everybody loves the idea of ag, unless it's the farmer's land and he wants to retire, right? That's, that's where we always run into, even when we have really, really heavily agricultural communities, and when it comes down to asking the community, well, do you want to have 40-acre zoning so that you're preserving that farmland in perpetuity? And people will balk and say, no, we want to go back to, you know, a home every three acres, or whatever it is. So, so it's really hard to kind of, to manage that. But what I have seen, so for example, I think it would be an interesting request of, you have your Parks Advisory Committee, I probably got the name wrong, but you've got your Parks Committee. You know, how can you work with them to encourage ag uses or sustain it? In a developing community, and it depends on where it is, you know, there are some, some places that do purchase of development rights, but that doesn't guarantee it's going to be an ag use, right? It just preserves the open space. So, so I think by policy or practice, if there's other incentives, you know, working with the school district to buy produce from the farmer, right, to keep it in productive and make it economically viable, there's, but that's more outside of the master plan, and that's more kind of a, is a program.
Yeah, and the only reason I mention it for the master plan is because I think it's important. And as we develop, I think that it's an important part of our community that could easily get lost. And I know that there, there are communities near us who have worked with the state and the owners to create protected, semi-protected. I don't ever want to do anything that would take away the rights of a, of a owner, and that's why I said what I did, but to help support them, and if it's their wish that it remain agriculture to help them with that, instead of just giving the appearance of favoring development. So I just, I think it's important, and I think preserving that part of our heritage before it's gone is important. And I know in some parts of Kent County have done that.
Yep.
I don't know the exact mechanism though, but I think it's, it should be an important part of who we are. I keep hearing from everybody that, you know, that's something that they don't want gone.
Yeah. The, Kent County uses a combination of purchase of development rights, that's their main mechanism. They have an ag working group that looks at that and tries to work with farmers, and then they also partnered with MSU Extension to do that, to try to keep the economic viability in the farms. And that's where, I mentioned the wedding venues earlier, right? Those, those are the types of things that can help assist at keeping, keeping it viable, but we can definitely go back in the, in the plan and make sure that the importance of ag is, is very clear, and that maybe there's some program suggestions in the implementation section that we could recommend.
All good comments so far.
Yeah.
Any other discussion items? I think we're in Chapter Four still. Nobody has any questions on the special studies? Like 140, 141? So just as a, yeah, so the, the, the presentation, I keep trying to slide my mouse over to this screen, too, and it's driving me crazy.
And we'll say for the special studies, we can cover those next month, because we're going to give you, we've had some discussions with staff, and what we're recommending is we actually pull that out and make that an appendix, and you'll have more detail on the special studies for next time.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, just let me give you a little background, I think everybody knows special studies, but let me just give a little background, the, the request had been, are there, let's look at a couple of areas and see what more detailed recommendations we have, you know, so give some examples. So if we're thinking about environmental protection and slopes, right now you have in your ordinance, for example, there's different tiers of percent grade for a slope for development, which makes it kind of complicated for development. And so we looked at that and what impact it was, would have, in addition to stormwater and soil, because you have some interesting soils in Ashdod County, and how you work with them. So we went through an analysis on that. We also looked at the mall for Maple, and to see that example is exactly what's in that special study, is what would it look like, could you, how many, you know, could you fit townhouses behind that? We've got examples from other places where they do exactly that as a transition between commercial and, and a park or a single-family. And so we, we looked at some of those in a deeper dive to give you some more information on that, so we'll give you those full reports probably next week. So you'll have those too. There's, there was pieces of it in the, in the, in the master plan, but we're going to pull those out and just let those stand on their own.
And I think I'm hearing this from you, Deb, the slideshow presentation does not follow the master plan page for page. It's just pulling out a couple of key elements from each chapter and then allowing us to, we can discuss any page in the master plan, but the slideshow does not go page for, page for page. All right. I think we're ready to move on to Chapter Five.
Okay, so Chapter Five is really our incorporation of the work and the concepts of Go Green Ashdod County. So what you'll see in here is a summary and kind of how we've synthesized that work that went into that plan. But furthermore, you'll see recommendations included in Chapter Seven of the implementation chapter, that pulls forward some of those ideas and makes them actionable. But then this chapter also serves as recommendations for future decisions carrying forward the work of the Go Green Plan. So I've listed here the four different main headings of Chapter Five, and then as I said, there's recommendations scattered throughout the implementation section as well, but these are what we've carried forward from the Go Green Plan. So focusing on celebrating Ashdod County's parks and recreation opportunities, and then something that we're kind of focusing on with this plan as well is greening the different areas of Ashdod County, so that can be bringing in trees, more green spaces, preserving those lands, but also just making more areas more green. So being that in the neighborhood mixed-use area, or the regional corridor areas. We also have a section that focuses on Ashdod County's countryside landscapes, so that's where we refer to preserving those larger lot sizes, making sure that we maintain the character of our agricultural rural countryside areas of the township. So maybe that's an area we could build more of that in as well. And then our last one focuses on resilient stormwater practices, so getting more into the technical engineering aspects of how we can make that happen. So these are the four categories, and then we'll pick back up in implementation as well, but we can talk through anything in Chapter Five.
I do want to say, I, I very much appreciate the resilient ground, stormwater lots, and incorporating those into new development, for sure.
Great.
More ponds that are scary, we don't need. Mosquito reading.
I'm not seeing any comments.
All right.
Good job on Chapter Five.
Yeah, thank you.
What was already based, that was easier.
Yeah.
The stormwater was the big add on that one.
Yeah. Okay, so Chapter Six, as I mentioned, this is our Master Streets Plan summary. So in addition to this comprehensive plan, there's the Master Streets Plan document. This chapter serves as a bridge between the two, so it shows how they work together, and then summarizes the contents of that Master Streets Plan. So to give you that visual again, we have the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. Those recommendations will work alongside the zoning ordinance, and then in looking at Ashdod County's Master Streets Plan, that will work alongside the Transportation and Mobility Ordinance that was adopted earlier, or at the end of last year, I believe.
And I will say for the Master Streets Plan, you had already received a link, we're going to be sending a new link for that document. Nothing really has changed except for the safety data, the crash data. So at the end of September, I'll say August, September, the 2024 numbers came out, so we updated those sections and added some more information that's even more depressing for, for, for your severe and fatal crashes. So, and, and for the public, kind of, this is an unusual add in a master plan. I mean, usually you'll see townships have specific information, usually there's a map that they call the, the, the master plan for their streets, but we went into a pretty big dive on this because of, Sarah, advance the next slide, because of the different contexts that Ashdod County has. You have quasi-urban, suburban, right, on the edge of the city of Kalamazoo, right? And then, and then you have rural, and those street types and how people drive on them, and the types of traffic, and the types of users are different. and the types of traffic and the types of users are different. Your, as we know, the, the road commission treats them all the same. All the streets are treated the same, but rural road design encourages speed and it encourages, it's, it's very auto-oriented and not designed for pedestrians and cyclists. And so knowing that you have transit, that you have areas of higher density residential, and then you have transit, and then in combination with the safety concerns that are present in the township, again, you're still, you're nine percent of the, the population of the county of Kalamazoo, and yet 20% of the severe and fatal crashes happen here. And so trying to address the safety factor, we recognize that in different areas, we need to treat them differently because of the context. And if we know people are going to be present, such as pedestrians or cyclists, we need to recognize that in our street design. And so that was really the thinking behind doing the Master Streets Plan is to recognize those contexts, really not proposing any major changes to what they do in the countryside residential, because that's a rural road, right? But as we get closer into those neighborhood place types, the mixed-use place types, how do we really think about what that looks like and, and, and be more intentional and then have a conversation with the road commission? So we'll get into that at the next meeting, but just kind of wanted to, to describe this combination of what happens with land use and your transportation system, those things work together, and it's really important that they work together well so people don't get hurt. And, and that's been a big portion of the conversation we've had in the past, but the, the plan, as you know, we talked about street types and where that goes and connectivity. So I, I won't go into all of it tonight, but just, and I keep wanting to touch Sarah's screen because I haven't touched, touched, uh, my screen, but that's really, that's just really the, the, the premise for, for doing this work. Did anyone have immediate questions on any of that that I can prepare for when we meet next on that, or any questions?
Do you have a magic way to get the road commission to agree?
We'll, we'll work, we're working on stuff.
I think that was a no.
I, no, I am not giving up hope. I am, I have, I, I'm, so what's really interesting is I'm involved with the Michigan Association of Planning, and they have a subcommittee on transportation and land use. And so that transportation subcommittee has a policy group, and we've been brainstorming on different ways in which either legislative or by policy, like how can you affect change to, to influence design for whether it's MDOT or the road commission if you're not in control of your roads? And I think the frustration for, for Oshmo is you're not in charge of your, you're not in control of your roads. You're at the mercy of the town, of the, of the county and MDOT. MDOT in some ways is easier to work with because they are more politically minded, and they have had a practice, they have a complete streets policy. It takes some time, but you can get there. I've worked with a number of different TSC offices, some are better than others, but I've, I've worked with them enough. Road commissions, unfortunately, just, and I mean this as a general statement, they, they have their own road commission, and it's not set up in a way where it makes it really easy for public input and, and influence to happen. There are places, for example, Macomb County changed their organization, so talking to the county, Macomb County changed from a road commission form to a road department, and they actually did away with their commission and incorporated their, their road department and just made it a department of the county, just like any other department. So that is a trend we're seeing. Oakland County is trying to do that right now. Calhoun County has done it.
Barrian County's done it.
So, so that might be an opportunity where you could, you could start to get more influence on some of those things. I will say that the road commission at Kalamazoo County has done, if you remember, they have a DDA policy, which allows for a little bit more flexible street design, not a lot, and there's some, some things I would change about that, which we recognize in the Master Streets Plan. But it's a start, and so we were taking that as a start and saying, okay, it's not just a DDA area, we want it for the entire neighborhood mixed-use area. So we, so there's a, there's a starting point where they actually have a policy in place that we'd want to expand upon and get it to apply for a bigger geographic area. So there is a starting point for that conversation, but then I think there's some other alternatives out there as well.
I would want to comment, our road commission is growing. I've watched it happen. I, I appreciate their concern about having roads that we don't have to spend inordinate amounts of money on to maintain. They've done good work for us, and so I want to commend them for that. And I think having the time, even on things that, right now, we look at them and say, oh, they could never happen. But if we know where we want to go and we come before them and say, here's the plan and here's why, this, this provides that starting point, and, and maybe it's not just our township. It, it's several of us that gather together and say, here, just foliage along the road, as simple as that is, changes the, the whole context of a neighborhood.
Yep, absolutely. And it affects property values and stormwater and, and all sort of temperature, temperature of a neighborhood, everything.
As simple as that.
Yeah. So that's, and that's really, that was part of the point, is that really clearly stating the township's expectations and aspirations for what you would like the network to look like. That was part of it, so absolutely. Yeah, Sarah pointed out, one of the, one of the things we did do, and again, it also kind of speaks to the, the, the character areas that we defined, where neighborhood and, and where the, the countryside character is. We did do an analysis of your zoning and your tax rates and looked at what costs what and where, and, you know, if we followed, for example, the suburban status quo, which is what your current ordinance has, I'd have to go back to the, it's so tiny, I can't read it. So we used the number 750 housing units because that was from the housing study from Upjohn that said you need 750 units. So we said, okay, if we're taking 750 units, where would they go and, and what density does it make sense? And how does that work with the current tax rate the township has to be able to pay for itself? A lot of people do not talk enough about how a lot of suburban-style development is subsidized with public streets and public water and sewer, so ratepayers actually end up subsidizing development without even knowing it. And so how do we appropriately place growth and development with those associated costs? And then what kind of density do you need to have so that it's paying for itself and providing for a system where you can maintain your assets over a long period of time? So we took that and quantified that, and so as we look at compact development patterns, now I'm not, and I'm not suggesting you go all the way to traditional neighborhood, but just as a matter of scale, kind of how, how much land does it take, how many miles? So if we did a true traditional neighborhood development, it'd be two miles of road to accommodate that 750 units versus 10, almost, well, 10.7 miles if we were doing a larger lot development. The same thing with the land area, if we looked at how much we would consume, 454 acres versus 62. So just, you know, kind of a magnitude there of, of four and understanding kind of what can fit where, given just the lot sizes that we use and the types of density to be able to pay for that infrastructure. So that exercise and those recommendations are also in that plan.
Have you seen other communities provide this level of analysis in their master plan to say, like, if you continue how you are, this is how much land you're going to consume for your growth?
There's not many that do that. For us, we just think it's super important because we're writing, Michigan, you were at the, I, so I just, the Michigan Association of Planning conference is going on right now, and I just gave a presentation on planning in Michigan over the past 100 years. I know, super exciting stuff. But, but what was really, really interesting and really depressing is that since Governor Milliken was in office, that we haven't, as a state, really taken a lot of action to preserve our natural resources. And so we talked, we talked about that, but instead, what we've been writing are these, these checks for infrastructure that we can't maintain. So we just got more money for street funding from the state, but if you look at Southeast Michigan, for example, their population has remained relatively stagnant over the past 50 years, but their land consumption has increased fourfold. And so when you're talking about schools and churches and roads and water and sewer and infrastructure and street lighting and all the things that go in to support development, they've expanded the footprint by four times, but they have no more, they have no additional people. They have more households because household size has been decreasing. But, but we've really been writing these checks that we're not going to be able to really maintain everything over time. And so for us, this is really foundational. There is a firm out of Charlotte, North Carolina called U3, and they've looked at the taxable value of areas and where development pays for itself, and that's really interesting. So if you're interested in more information on that, you can go to Strong Towns. Strong Towns is really the place where they really talk about kind of being able to pay for what you're building.
Okay, I think we're good to go to chapter seven?
Sounds good. Okay, so chapter seven is kind of the culmination of all the different elements that we've reviewed in the plan so far. Just a reminder of kind of how this takes place, I like to use this graphic here. So it shows the comprehensive plan is the advisory element, and then the zoning ordinance will become the regulatory element. Our place types map will inform the zoning map over time, as we discussed earlier. And then our different place types categories will guide decisions for the zoning districts that are established. So that's something that we'll see take place as the zoning ordinance is being updated and then over the course of time from 20 years from now too.
So Scott had mentioned the zoning amendments and what that looks like. So you aptly noted the simplify residential zoning districts. You have a lot of zone districts, and so we can make those simpler. We can, we can simplify that. It also mentions including looking at housing types, and there's missing middle housing types. So I think, Deb, you had asked about what's the right percentage and what does that look like? So I looked at the numbers, and so for households, right, the people living in the homes, 69% of your households in Oshmo are one and two-person households, and 30%, just about 31% have three or more people living in them. So that's, that's a pretty big, you know, a lot of people, and actually you're a little bit higher than the national average. So what's interesting is people think, well, we're, we're a single-family community. Well, only 25% of households now, generally, are mom and dad and two kids. The demographics have substantially changed, and, you know, people are staying single longer, when they marry, they're waiting longer to have kids. There's people, seniors who are living longer, you know, and they're one and two-person households, they're empty nesters. So the demographics generally have been pretty dramatic. Oshmo has a good mix of housing types. You have about 45% of your housing stock is attached and detached, single-family homes. And then you have about 18% is that 20 units and up. So you have a pretty decent concentration, those higher-density apartment buildings that you've got. So that's kind of taken care of. What a lot of communities, and historically with zoning, going back to about the 60s, it's either single-family homes or high-density multifamily, you know, multiplexes, right? You don't have a lot of the stuff in the middle. About 13% of your housing stock is, you got 2% duplexes, 2.5% three or four units, 9% five to nine units. That's really the sweet spot. I think that we're, we're not suggesting that you need high-rise multifamily to meet those density numbers, right? We're not saying that that's the right housing stock, that really when we're talking about what's compatible with single-family neighborhoods, if, you know, if you're, if there's going to be a development going adjacent to it, or even if you wanted to allow, for example, accessory dwelling units, that people could choose to do that and ask, subject to all sorts of, you know, whether you want to talk about parking or lot size or anything like that. But those missing middle housing types, those smaller footprint housing types are really, I think, where your sweet spot is and that we could definitely focus more housing, you know, more production on to meet the needs of those, that 69% of one and two-person households. So for example, what they found is, they call them cottage courts, they're little tiny cottage, cottages, they're still kind of standalone, but it's, it's in a little development. Single women love that market for single women, they love that housing type because you're still kind of independent, but you're near other people. So there's, there's different housing situations and different household types that we have that we can increase, I think, some of those missing middle, but the low end, as far as the lower-density missing middle housing types that we could, we could focus on a bit more. But there's no magic number as far as what's the right mix. It's really dependent on your community and housing, you know, preferences and, you know, my mom is, she lives alone, but she has a five-bedroom house, and she's going to stay there till she dies. So it's, it's, it's hard to say exactly what the right mix is depending on the preferences of your community. Okay. So, so that was one, so those are the recommendations for housing. Modernize the industrial zoning. Similarly, with zoning codes, you see light industrial or heavy industrial, and there's a whole range of stuff in the middle, especially around that research area, whereas people in lab codes and they're doing, you know, you know, whether they're mixing pharmaceutical compounds or doing other things that would fall into that industrial category that really are more like office uses. So we recognize that because you have that corridor and you have that area, kind of saying, let's look at that and figure out how to do that. I'll give you an example. So city of Grand Rapids has one industrial zone district, and you have, I think, three or three, four? There's a, four, four. So refined commercial zoning, looking at mixed-use, kind of the scale of it. So we have the regional kind of commercial that we recognize, the big box stuff, which in the market analysis, you don't, you don't need tons more of that. And then really focusing on the mixed-use, kind of playing off that ninth and stadium vision that you had for downtown, but also thinking about other areas in the township where, again, the scale of it, making things more human scale, whether it's your roads or your housing, is really kind of the overall theme, I'd say, for this plan. Like, how do we bring it down and make it more human scale? So we build that sense of belonging and neighbor-ness that people really express. That was the top thing in the comments we had from the master plan from people, is that they wanted to get to know their neighbors, they wanted that sense of community. So how do we build that? And we have to focus on human scale. And then the other big recommendation was streamline overlay zones. You have a lot that we can clean up. So those were the big kind of zoning plan recommendations.
Building from there, the rest of this implementation chapter, this just kind of summarizes the zone districts in comparison to the place types, not to say this is how it'll all shake out, but it just gives you a grouping of kind of what you can maybe see those residential categories fall into, but definitely not exact. And then going back to what we started talking about at the beginning of the presentation, we organized the implementation recommendations along, by those five different, well, six different big ideas. The sixth one was incorporating the other plans, but in this chapter, we have them organized by these five categories. So you'll see that reflected in the implementation chapter. And then what we did is for each of those five different, different concepts, we illustrate the different projects, policies and programs that we think would be effective in achieving those goals. And then we have different priority ratings to show a timeframe of when we'd like to see those take place. Just to kind of guide, what should we start with? What's something that's a little bit farther out that'll take more work? Does anyone?
Did you include the Phillips Center? Did you include the newsroom?
This one here? Yeah, so essentially, what I have in the remainder of the presentation, I have kind of the high priority items listed for the different implementation sections. The first one is our idea that a connected community begins with a shared sense of belonging for everyone, from newcomers to longtime residents. So this one really focuses on different implementation strategies around placemaking, those gateways that are in the place types map, signage and wayfinding, promoting inclusivity, maybe establishing some programming within the DDA for like a Christmas tree lighting or things like that. And then one of the other ideas that we're proposing that would be kind of an exciting new development in the area would be the Township Hub Plan. So that's right where we are right now. It's the It's the library, township offices, the park. Throughout our engagement for the project, a lot of people said that they see this as the center of Oshmo. They love it here. It's great as it is, and they want to be able to spend more time here. So, essentially, what this idea here would do would provide more opportunities for people to spend more time in this area. So, there wouldn't be any major developmental changes, but it would be bringing in programming and then kind of changing the roadway system through here, and as Suzanne mentioned earlier, making it have some of those human-scale amenities that for people coming to the library, maybe they stay longer and spend more time in the area, and eventually connecting it out to different surrounding neighborhoods of the township so that people could come to this area without having to use a car, and that would kind of be a goal for the future.
The blue arrows across Maine, I think, are particularly important for Seventh. That Kellhaven Trail, how do you get from, you know, how do you connect your green spaces and amenities? And so, this could provide the opportunity for a traffic signal or activated pedestrian signal at a minimum, both, you know, it could be, I keep pushing for the traffic signal just because I think the fire department could activate it, right, ahead of time if there's an emergency call, but then also you could have it for pedestrian crossings. So, this alignment and changing those drive locations would allow for that. So, that could be a big public safety improvement, instead of having people feel like they have to go down to Ninth to cross at a signal, which you had somebody recently hit down there trying to cross the street because it's so wide. So, how do we kind of also calm the traffic? We do have plans in the Master Streets Plan. MDOT is proposing to put a boulevard in in key locations. So, this hopefully will also help inform boulevard location so that we can ensure that we're trying to calm the traffic a little bit and provide safe crossing.
So, our next category in the implementation section goes back to that key idea of housing. So, some of the main kind of high-priority items for this portion would be taking a look at the zoning ordinance, so going through and doing an audit, using the toolkit to figure out where there is that we really need to make shifts to see how we can achieve our housing goals. And then, we would prioritize making those ordinance changes, and then, as Suzanne spoke about earlier, that missing middle housing would be a focus of the implementation for this second item here. And I'll just kind of go through these all, and then we can talk about if there is any specific items we wanted to work through. Our third one is in reference to commercial. So, within the different commercial areas of Oshmo of top priority would be making those more walkable and focusing on some streetscape design elements. Again, kind of going back to the Master Streets Plan in terms of how can we change the roadways in our commercial areas. And again, we would refine zone districts to support more of those appropriately scaled commercial uses. So, focusing on that neighborhood mixed-use place type would be a high priority in this category. Up next, this one really ties closely to our place types and the street typologies of the Master Streets Plan. So, it would be implementing those changes to make Oshmo more walkable and connected. And again, just ensuring that changes in land use align with the place types. So, this is higher priority, but also something that would be ongoing throughout time. And then, another key item that we had identified for this section was implementing low-impact development incentives. So, that goes back to the resiliency for stormwater. And there's definitely more items within these categories. These are just kind of the ones in that first short timeframe that could be taken care of first. And then, our last section, again, this one's very closely tied to the Master Streets Plan, so it's figuring out how we can make transportation, motorized and non-motorized safer and of higher quality for Oshmo residents. So, enhancing pedestrian safety at key intersections, improving roadway safety, utilizing the contact-sensitive design of the Master Streets Plan, improving multimodal and non-motorized transportation options, so building on the work that the township has already done for their trail systems and their kind of side paths in the area. And then, again, just coordinating with MDOT, the Road Commission, to make sure that we can work towards all of these things happening.
And I will just say for these items, when you look at the Master Streets Plan, we took an even deeper dive based off the safety data about using federal highway safety countermeasures. So, those should be things speaking in the language of our friends, that what could you do to affect high-crash locations and then also accommodate multimodal? So, we identified actual locations and what kind of countermeasures would be recommended. So, there's a much deeper piece to the Streets Plan when you get into it.
Does that include the new development of the sports complex?
So, we do recognize in the sub-area plan, in the special study that we did around the mall, that the sports complex will be there. You do have the bus system that's there, and the improvements that we're recommending in the special study would help connect that, and we do envision more connected roadways and non-motorized in that area. So, we've got the components identified in the plan.
So, that brings us to the end of my overview for the implementation chapter. Open to any other questions we have for Chapter Seven, and then I can talk through next steps from here.
Yeah. I think, thank you Suzanne and Sarah, first of all. If there's any questions regarding Chapter Seven or just any general questions overall, I think this would be the appropriate time to ask those.
I have just one more comment.
Yeah.
Under the education section, which is page 35 in my book, it mentions Kalamazoo Public Schools, but it doesn't say, it doesn't, Atsigo and Madawan don't get a mention, and personally, I think they should. I mean, that's, they're part of our community and everybody wants to go to KPS.
Thank you. We will butt in there.
Thank you.
No, I mean, we mentioned Madawan and Atsigo in that paragraph. They're just not bolded.
Yeah. Yeah, it's down at the bottom. In addition to KPS, portions of Oshmo are served by Madawan Consolidated Schools, Alleghen ISD, Atsigo Public Schools. I mentioned that offer of the high-quality educational opportunities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's a super easy fix. We love those.
It's two clicks.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, yeah, next steps.
All right. So, as we mentioned, the November 13 meeting is when you'll take a deeper dive into the Master Streets Plan, and then ideally, those would then be released or recommended to the Township Board. And then, from there, the 63-day public review period would open. So, that just, we would still be making any revisions that come to mind for you all could take place during that 63-day period still, and then we'd be taking in public comment throughout that period as well. So, it just opens up for the plan to move forward towards adoption, but revisions would be made throughout that 63-day window. And then, the final steps would be, you would recommend the plan for approval to the board, and then the Township Board would approve the plan from there. So, that would take place after that 63-day review period. And then, we would start implementing the plan. Ideally, it would be the steps after that.
Any questions on next steps? Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
My pleasure. We are very, I mean, you guys have been great to work on with, and we're very excited about this plan and the Master Streets Plan, and I just think it relates to smart growth and doing it wisely and respecting your natural resources and as well as the investments that you've already made as a township.
Thank you. I'm excited too. Okay. Anticipating that there might be more public comment, I'm going to ask if we can take a five-minute recess. My eyeballs are about floating over here. So, let's reconvene at 8:05. We're through items one through six, and we are on item seven, the second opportunity for a public comment. So, we will open the floor for additional public comment at this time.
Place type is different than zoning types. That was indicated during the presentation. So, I'm kind of with Scott up there, kind of what's the point? Maybe have a future zoning plan instead. And I think that might be something that's more understood by everyone. The two ladies that were up here indicated that existing agriculture could continue, but there was no mention for future agriculture. You know, I understand the people that are making these suggestions, the company that we have hired to do this don't live here. Their input, while input was solicited at your various PR events, your people that live in your agricultural zones were busy farming. There needs to be a place type in the plan for agriculture. If you look at slide 41 during their presentation where they went through all the different place types, they mentioned every other existing residential zone. There was no mention made of agriculture. One other thing I noted was that on page 234 is stated that we are partnering with Consumers Energy in developing a green energy integration policy. I'd be curious to know some more details about that at a later time. I also noticed that there was no mention of solar farms in the master plan and no mention of battery storage in that 240-some, 250-page document. And just to point to Jody's comment at the beginning of the meeting, that she'd like to be notified when people are presenting. Having a salaried IT person here at the meeting shouldn't be an issue, particularly now that everyone's making 100% of their payback. Thank you.
How you doing? I live in one of the affected areas, obviously. That's why I'm here, because I got a text yesterday. I didn't know anything about this, and one of my neighbors texted me and said, hey, did you hear about, are you going to a meeting tomorrow? I've never been to a meeting. I don't know how this works. But I was sitting there, and he sent me this thing, and I'm like, I was under the understanding that we were going to come in and we're going to listen to somebody tell us why anybody should be doing this in our backyard. I mean, this thing's literally right in my backyard. So, I guess all I'm hearing is everybody telling them that they don't want it, and I don't know who makes it, if it's all you that make the decision, or who makes the decision that we would bring this into everybody's backyard. I just built a brand-new home and spent most of my hard-earned money that I've made over the years on my home. And I don't know where all you live, but this thing's literally going to be in my backyard, and I'm going to lose probably 50% of what my value of my home is to have this thing move in here. And who's going to pay us? And who's going to pay us when it does catch fire and we have to leave? You know, who, who, why are we not putting this somewhere where there's nobody? I mean, there's plenty of places out there to not put it right in our backyard. So I've never been to one of these meetings. I appreciate every one of you up there. When I come in here, you guys are easy to work with, and I appreciate that. Very nice people. I'm just trying to wrap my head around why we're doing, or even considering, letting this come in here. So that's all I got to say.
Like the gentleman before me, I have never been to one of these, but I was, heard about the master plan, and my husband, you know, showed me the map. And really, the, the one that concerned, the biggest part that concerns me, well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for all your work, because this is a very comprehensive plan. I can see a lot of time, lots of hours were put into it. I'm really concerned about the key connections map, map 3.1, specifically the proposed connecting streets between WH Avenue and Sixth Street and Seventh Street and Sixth Street. As many of, we've all heard about how we want to have agricultural land preserved and that rural residential landscape preserved. These, my house is one of these on Sixth Street. I can tell you right now, this is mostly agricultural land. If it's not used for agriculture, it's very pristine in terms of the environmental effects. It's maybe a house and then 45 acres, 10 acres, 15 acres. These are very, very, what do I want to say? Wildlands. We have a lot of wildlife that use these lands. Putting those connecting streets there will destroy all of that. They also go right through people's houses. One of them goes right through a 250-year-old oak tree that we have. And also, looking at the, the places where they're proposed to intersect, do not make any sense whatsoever with the topography of the region. These are hills, and you're basically driving down into a ditch and then a cross street. So my whole point about this is I'm concerned about the level of detail that these maps go into, but that they haven't taken into account what houses are there, what land is there, how that land looks. And so I would encourage the team to go back and really take a close look at these maps and what is there now, and rethink how those connecting streets. Those are not going to work, I don't think, for right, right now, it will destroy that entire area. So, thank you.
All right, seeing no one else, we'll close the second public comment period. And we'll move on to number eight. I asked Jody to put this item on the agenda today. So I accepted, I was elected and nominated and elected and accepted a position on another board locally. It's my kid's Little League board, which I'm very involved in. And what that does is it takes away most of my first Tuesday evening, or first Thursday evenings of the month. So I talked to Jody and just wanted to get the commission's thoughts and, and I guess, comments on whether it's appropriate for me to remain to chair of this commission, having taken on that additional responsibility. So I'm happy to keep helping serve the township. I enjoy doing this. I think it's important work, as voiced by all the, the public comments that we've heard tonight. So with that being said, I'd just like to...
What are you looking for from us tonight?
If you think it's appropriate that I continue to chair this commission, being only available one meeting a month.
Just a question, would that be 12 months out of the year?
Yeah, it's a 12-month.
Continuing, okay.
Well, your position as chair is only for 2025. We elect officers every January.
Correct.
Okay.
So there would be an opportunity for a different election in January, so we could continue on as is. I will be at the November 13th meeting, and that's too important for me to miss here for the, the road, the transportation plan, yeah.
I'd recommend you stay until January.
Finish your term.
And we'll, we'll work it out.
We've, whenever there was absences in the past, we've had people who stepped in, people who have a tremendous amount of experience, one who sits right next to you does. And I think she's more than happy to fill in when necessary, but you've served honorably, and you should continue the rest of your term. And we can discuss then later, after you finish your term.
Okay, I'm completely fine with that. I just wanted to be transparent to the commission, and I appreciate your comments. All right, with that, we're adjourned at 8:15. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Out of here. Okay, what's going on with this battery store?